No, not yet. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April 23, 2014, meeting of the Minneapolis City Planning Commission. My name is Ted Tucker. I'm president of the commission. Joining me today are Commissioners Kronzer, Brown, Geselmann, Lippke-Peer, and Bender. But now would be a very good time to make sure your phones are on silent, as will I. First item of business is to approve the actions of the meeting of April 7, 2014. May I have a motion to approve those actions? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Those actions are approved. Our next item is to sort the agenda. You may have seen the green agenda on the table outside. We'll go through the six items and decide whether we will put them on consent, discuss them, continue them, or withdraw them. I'll go through them one by one. If the item goes on the consent agenda, that will be passed as recommended by staff in the report. So item number one is La Rive Condominium, 110 Bank Street. Anyone here wishing to discuss or modify the staff recommendation? If not, that will go on consent. Item number two, Kraus Liquor Store, 80 Broadway Street Northeast. Anyone here to discuss that, wishing to speak? Okay, we'll put that on discussion. Item number three is 555 Edition at 3965 Minnehaha Avenue. Anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation for item number three? If not, we'll put that on consent. Item number four is Metro Taxi and Limo at 3520 43rd Street East. Is there anyone here wishing to discuss or modify the staff recommendation for item number four? Okay, we'll put that on discussion. Item number five is Village Market at 912 East 24th Street and 2301 Elliott Avenue South, 2218 10th Avenue South. That was noticed to be continued to the meeting of May 5, but I think now will be the meeting of May 19. We'll continue it, too. And item number six, Ankaustic Chowgirls at 1401 Marshall Street Southeast. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation for item number six? If not, that will go on consent as well. So, to be discussed is item two and item four. Item for the consent agenda is one, three, and six, and item five to be continued. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Okay, that will be our agenda. We move next to the report from the committee of the whole. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. At our April 10 Committee of the Whole meeting, we considered a land sale at 3217 29th Avenue South for construction of a single-family home and found that sale of that property is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor of that recommendation, say aye. Opposed? Thank you. No action item. We turn now to public hearings. First, may I have a motion to continue item number five to the meeting of May 19? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye. We will continue that. Next, I will open the public hearing for items on the consent agenda. That's again, items number one, three, and six. Again, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation for those three items? If not, I will close the public hearing. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Okay, the consent agenda is approved. We turn now to the items for discussion. First item is number two, and Janelle Widmire will give the staff report. And I'd be particularly interested, I read about changes to the site plan, so I'd like to know what changes those might be, and a lot of discussion about gateway functions and alternative compliance for windows and landscaping.
The project before you is located at 80 Broadway Street Northeast, at the corner of Marshall and Broadway. And it's a proposal to construct a new 7,500-square-foot building, one story in height, for a new liquor store. And the proposed layout that's being discussed tonight is pretty straightforward. The building is up to the corner of Broadway and Marshall with parking fronting 11th Avenue. The entrances, one faces the parking lot and then one faces the Broadway-Marshall Street And there is a current rendering, this would be viewed from 11th and Marshall. And just to compare what had been originally noticed to what we're looking at tonight, here's that previous site plan. So the building had frontage on Broadway, Marshall, and 11th, and then the parking lot was located to the east of the building. They were not allowed to have Broadway curb cut access, so with that, they came back and revised their plan to show access on Marshall and 11th. The site is currently zone C2. A liquor store is allowed as a conditional use in that district. And a conditional use is a use that's allowed upon demonstrating that such a use will comply with all the conditions and standards of the zoning ordinance. With this being new construction, they also need site plan review. And just to give you an idea of this surroundings, you mentioned the gateway. The bridge from North Minneapolis is just to the west here, but at this intersection, which is a primary intersection, we have a mix of uses. We have a bank here, Botno Library, a parking lot for Greco here, a restaurant directly to the east, bars located here, and then further east, there's more residential. The comprehensive plan calls for mixed use at this location. It's, the site is located in an activity center. Both Marshall and Broadway are designated as community corridors, and these designated do support commercial development on the site. There's not a small area plan in effect for this property. I do know that Sheridan is working on a small area plan, but the boundary for Sheridan falls on Broadway, and I didn't see any specific guidance for this site in their draft plan. It was just more general for commercial development here. And the above-the-falls small area plan, or the update to the above-the-falls small area plan, also doesn't specifically address this site. There are areas that are specifically called out and more specific guidance is provided, but this site was not included in any of those areas. Staff found that the proposed use is not expected to be detrimental to the public health, safety, or general welfare, and should not impede the normal and orderly development of surrounding properties. It does need to comply with all licensing requirements, like safety ordinances and Public Works development standards. The Business Licensing Office did confirm that the subject site complies with all the licensing location requirements for an off-sale liquor establishment, and so that includes like spacing from other liquor stores and schools. I think there's some other uses as well, but they have confirmed that those requirements are met. Public Works has also reviewed the project, and no major issues have been identified. To ensure safety on the site, staff is also recommending that additional windows be provided along Broadway, because we do consider, excuse me, that to be a primary frontage. As far as traffic impacts, those are expected to be minimal as well. They are providing 15 spaces on the site, 14 are required. They're also providing the four required bicycle parking spaces. The applicant has indicated that deliveries will be made during off-peak traffic times, and with the two access points that are proposed, those have been okayed by Public Works. They don't think the impacts to Marshall and 11th would be as, they wouldn't be drastic as they would be for Broadway, which is why they originally wouldn't allow that. Lastly, the use will conform to the applicable regulations of the C2 zoning district with the conditional use permit and site plan review being approved. Because of meeting all these findings for the conditional use permit, staff is recommending approval. For the site plan review, they are asking for alternative compliance for a number of things, and I'll start with the landscaping. The general landscaping requirement of landscaping 20% of the net lot area, they're slightly below that at 17%, so, and they're also below on the number of onsite trees. So what they're proposing to do is actually landscape some of the boulevard along 11th Avenue where currently there is no landscaping, as well as adding boulevard trees along Broadway and Marshall, and then they're adding some additional trees along 11th as well. That proposal also affects meeting the seven-foot-wide landscaped yard and screening for a parking fronting street, so that is a seven-foot-wide landscaped area there, but if you include that, they would be meeting the 20% requirement. And as a condition, we are recommending that they actually provide more trees to meet some of these other requirements. Four can be provided along Broadway, the two along Marshall are sufficient and will be allowed by the county, but they would need to provide at least two more along 11th So that covers the landscaping requirements and the recommended conditions. So then, looking at the building, they're asking for some alternatives. First, the building placement, let me go back to the site plan, because they are at the corner of Broadway and Marshall, and they oriented the building more east-west than north-south, they do need alternative compliance for the placement between 11th and the building. They do have frontage on 3rd Street, so taking that into consideration, we are recommending alternative compliance of that standard. For the second alternative compliance that's being requested for the building is, has to do with the windows. Along Broadway, they are short, they're at 17%, and these windows here and here, the more clear story windows, they don't meet the requirements because they're more than four feet above grade. So because this is more of a primary frontage, we do want them to meet the 30% requirement here. And because they do have coolers, show you their floor plan here, they were proposing to do the coolers here, we suggested that they be relocated to the parking lot side because they would need to be provided somewhere, with that that would be an alternative so they could get more windows here, and then with the alternate location, that we would allow a little bit more flexibility on the 11th parking avenue, or parking lot side, but they could also provide some more windows where there's an office at the corner here. So for that, we're recommending that 25% windows be allowed on that facade. Otherwise, on the Marshall side, they are far exceeding the minimum requirements. Then the last alternative compliance request is for ground floor active functions, and that is just on the side of the building that faces the parking lot. They're at 36.5%, they're exceeding the maximum by 6.5%, and since they do have frontage on three sides, we thought that would be reasonable to grant that alternative. The applicant has indicated that they are okay with all the recommended conditions of approval, and there's quite a bit of correspondence that came in, you received some additional correspondence today, and that included multiple neighborhood groups. But that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions?
Commissioner Lippke-Peer?
Yeah, Janelle, do you know if during the discussions that were had about Broadway, any discussion was had regarding the main entry? Because it seems to be really focused on the parking lot and not even, it's not on Broadway, but it's also not on Marshall, so I kind of question its location and orientation.
So that's the entrance that you're referring to, and they do have windows on both sides, so we didn't look at asking them to do anymore. It is a single door rather than a double door that you can see on the side facing the parking lot. But we did want that to be an active entrance, so they are making it accessible. And so it will be available for people to use.
Okay, and then in terms of the 30% window requirement on West Broadway, are they, do you know if they're amiable to agreeing to that, or are they?
Yes.
Are they moving the coolers, or how are they proposing to achieve the window requirement? Or, I suppose they can get to that when they present?
We'll get to that when they come up. Commissioner Kronzer, is anyone else wishing to ask questions?
Thank you, President Tucker. Janelle, and you touched on this just really briefly, but in the PDR report, it talked about traffic may be an issue. Can you flush that out, what Public Works ultimately determined with the traffic impacts of this project?
On Broadway Street, there are high traffic volumes, and during rush hour especially, you get cars that are stacked from intersection to intersection, so they just didn't think it would be feasible to have a curb cut on Broadway without creating major safety issues. Whereas on Marshall, you know, you do have high traffic volumes again, but it moves a little bit better, so they weren't as concerned on Marshall Street. And then 11th is more of a secondary street, so again, they didn't have concerns about that. And they have, in the past, generally said, "We don't want any more curb cuts on Broadway." So they wanted to be consistent with that.
So ultimately, they're okay with the proposed design?
Yes.
Okay. And then, are you aware of any neighborhood planning processes going on at this intersection? I know NRP was, has sort of sunsetted, but is there any neighborhood-led planning efforts in this, at this quadrant, or this node, or anything?
Not aware of anything specific to this node. I did mention that Sheridan Neighborhood Organization is working on a draft small area plan, and it kind of touches on it, but it didn't have, for the draft that I read, it didn't seem to focus too much on this node specifically.
Okay. And can you, relating to the above-the-falls plan, can you remind us what that plan calls out for Marshall? I know there's some correspondence about some future greenway, parkway, bike lanes. Can you kind of educate us on that a little bit?
It does talk about making it more of like a parkway-type street, but I don't know, I don't recall the specifics on that. Yeah, I don't know, I think it's something along lines of adding more greenery. I'm not sure, you know, if they came up with any kind of specifics for how many lanes, bike lanes would be added, those details I don't recall.
Commissioner Lippke-Peer, another question?
Yeah, Sergeant, I just have one more question. What is the current spacing right now from this location to the next closest liquor store? I know we have regulations regarding how close they can be. Is this in violation of those, or is this something that is even an issue we can consider?
It is not in violation of that. They did work with the Business Licensing Office to confirm that it does meet all the spacing requirements, and I want to say the nearest liquor store would be at, it's on 2nd, it's part of a grocery store, and I'm forgetting Centiares, I think is the grocery store, about 18th.
2,000 feet or 1,000 feet, or whatever the spacing is. So this is, in terms of us being able to say yes or no just to the use itself, what are, it's meeting the zoning requirements and it's meeting the spacing requirements?
Correct.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions of staff at this time? Okay, thank you very much. Stand by, I'm sure there'll be more questions. At this point, I will open the public hearing. I'd like to hear first from the applicant or representative, and you could talk about the, anything you want, actually, presenting your project, certainly the conditions suggested by staff, and also the context of this building and how you make a presence in this gateway.
Of course. Thank you, President Tucker and Commissioners. My name is Jason Kraus. My name is Jason Kraus, and I'm the first representative for the applicant who's going to be speaking to you this evening. Thank you for having us today. First thing I'd like to discuss is the plan envisioned that we have for this liquor store. And the first thing I want to mention is that this is going to be an owner-operated store, and that's significant because this is not a chain of any sort. In fact, I plan to be the owner-operator of the store. Little history about me, I am born and raised in the Twin Cities. I'm from St. Paul originally, but don't hold that against me. I did migrate west of the river and now reside in St. Louis Park. For the last 10 years, I've been working here in downtown Minneapolis as an attorney, and my plans are to take early retirement from the law and go into the liquor business full-time, and this liquor store. I will be the third generation in my family to go into retail liquor. My grandfather was in retail liquor. My father's been in retail liquor for the past 25 years. And so this is what I know, this is our family business, and I've been very fortunate to have my dad as a mentor over the last 25 years, seeing the way that he has run his business, and learn about the liquor business from him. And I think the most important thing that I've learned from him is the significance of embracing and partnering with the community that you're a part of. And his current store is in the Longfellow neighborhood in South Minneapolis, and I think that if you were to talk to anyone in that community, they would have nothing but wonderful things to say about what a great member he has been there, and that's certainly my intention here, running this store. Now, I envision this as the perfect neighborhood store, and I say that because this is not going to be the kind of store where we're trying to draw citywide from other aspects of Minneapolis or from St. Paul. We're not going to be putting ads in the Star Tribune that are full-page, trying to draw traffic from all over the place. We really want to appeal to northeast Minneapolis and the neighborhoods there, as well as in the north loop, and we really want to be identified with that area and synonymous with that area. And we intend to be a full-service liquor store, have excellent selection in craft beer, craft spirits, wine as well. I'm sure we'll be doing many product tastings. We plan to offer make-your-own-six-pack things for craft beer. We'll have very knowledgeable staff, we'll have competitive pricing, and we'll be bike-friendly as well as dog-friendly, kind of incorporating those aspects of this neighborhood. In addition to that, we're constantly thinking of ways that we can also incorporate the arts aspect of the neighborhood and really engage the community as part of this store. We're excited about this location for a number of reasons, but one of the main reasons, and I'm sure I don't have to necessarily tell all of you, but I'm going to, is that this is really the heart of the craft beer movement. And within virtually a stone's throw of the store, you have 612 Brew, you have Indeed Brewing, you've got Dangerous Man, you've got Sociable Cider Works, Boom Island is close, Fulton's not too far, and just recently, Brow House opened up. And the next movement that we're going to see that's going to be significant in our industry is craft spirits. And you already see that budding in the northeast Minneapolis community as well. They have both Norseman and Wander North who are already in the craft spirits industry, and I would assume that there will be more to follow them. This area, as I alluded to earlier, is also, this is where the northeast art crawl is located, and it's a great area because it has a number of independently-owned, many-family-run businesses, shops, restaurants, and bars, just like us. And that really lends itself to what's become a very dynamic, vibrant area that is continually evolving and developing, and we're really excited to be a part of that. In terms of this corner, we're going to beautify the corner, we're going to bring competition into the area, which is good for all the consumers, we're going to be adding jobs in the area, and obviously, we're going to be contributing significantly to the tax base as well. Regarding the site, I want to thank Janelle and city staff for the very professional report that they put together, and I asked the Planning Commission to approve the staff report. This proposal meets all the city's requirements in the zoning code. The site's been zone C2 for well over a decade, which is a zoning category that is designated for liquor stores in the city of Minneapolis. As you're well aware, it's a conditional use, which means the use is permitted with certain conditions. For off-sale liquor stores, that conditional use in a C2 district is governed by Chapter 536, and the development standards include spacing requirements and maintaining the site free of litter. And as you heard from Janelle, and you've already had some discussion, Business Licensing has already said that this site meets the spacing requirements. The Planning Division and the Planning Commission have consistently found that new liquor stores do not adversely affect neighborhoods. Some recent and previous examples of this would be the Mill Store at 1851 Central Avenue Northeast, which was approved by this commission in February of 2013, the Elevated Beer Wine and Spirits Store at 4135 Hiawatha, which was approved in June of 2012. There was a liquor store application for a location in Broadway and Washington that was approved in January of 2011. There was another application for Hiawatha Falls Liquor at 4604 Minnehaha Avenue, which was approved in June of 2010. And finally, Lake Wine and Spirits at 400 West Lake Street, which was approved in January 2009. Each of these were zone C2, and in each case, the Planning Commission approved the applications with the finding that the Planning Division does not believe a liquor store would be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, comfort, or general welfare of the surrounding area. And city staff has made that same finding here with our project. I ask you to uphold your policies and approve the staff report. This plan will bring a needed change to what has been a blighted site and meet the consumer demands of a growing, thriving, dynamic neighborhood. Thank you.
Keep here.
Yes, so can we chat a little bit about the windows? What are you guys proposing to do along that Broadway facade?
Sure, I'll address it very briefly, and then also, our representative, D.J., our architecture team will be able to speak to that, but we are agreeable to the recommendation that's been made by city planning to relocate our reach-in cooler for craft beer to the other side of the store so that we can make accommodations to have more windows on that Broadway side.
And then, another question, just in terms of, you mentioned beautifying the corner. What are your thoughts in terms of the fact that, I mean, even this shot is of the entry from the parking lot? I'm kind of concerned about, Broadway is the major corridor, we are, you know, we're a city, we're not a suburb, so how do we make the front door seem like the front door instead of the back door? Would you be amenable to changing that, or at least, you know, adding double doors, maybe adding some of the nice shrubbery you have around this entrance, around the Broadway corner, Marshall as well? That way, it softens that one, too?
We would be amenable to adding certain accents, I guess, to that area, to that entry area. It's important for a number of reasons that we have this double-door main entryway facing our parking lot where many of our customers...
Yeah, I'm not saying to get rid of it, I'm just saying that, you know, you don't need to make this one look like the back door, but the front door should actually look like the main door.
Sure.
So enhance the other one, not necessarily detract from this one?
Yes, we're open to that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kronzer?
Thanks, just a follow-up. Can you explain where the checkouts are located and how it relates to the two entries? Because obviously, security is an issue, and, you know, there are... And, you know, there are buildings that have these double entries where the second entry is sort of forgotten about.
Do you know, please? Oh, there we go.
Sometimes locked.
So, here is what we've been referring to as the main entryway where the parking lot is. We intend to have our registers here to have traffic flow. And we haven't decided this yet, but we might have a divider of some sort here so the traffic flow will be this way through the store. And that works better both in terms of being able to set up and merchandise the store, but just as importantly, if not more importantly, so that we can observe all of our customers and have kind of a standard flow of things for shoplifting purposes and concerns like that.
Well, so, what's your plan for the other entrance, then? Because then, you don't have that opportunity with the entrance off of Broadway.
You know, for this entrance, we would likely funnel traffic in through this direction as well. And what we're trying to do is to avoid people from walking down here and walking all the way up.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Is your architect going to speak a little bit about some of the arrangements or stand for questions?
Certainly. I'm Scott Nelson from DJR, project architect. We've been working with Jason for several months on this, and I'd like to also thank Janelle and the staff and the Public Works folks for lots of suggestions. And we're more than willing to follow the recommendations of the report. And I think maybe I'll just go to, can you still hear me if I'm over here? Okay. Talk about our, the main entry is here because most of the folks that'll come with cars and use carts will come and go out of that. And then, we've got it set up where you would route in, come through, and exit there. But we definitely are aware of the gateway nature of this site and have been trying for some time to develop this as a unique, four-sided architecture. It's a, it's a, it's not an inexpensive building. It's not trying to be a typical chain retail building. It's got lots of glass, it's got lots of different materials, the stone and the cedar siding and things of that nature that we've kind of picked as accents on the building that are sort of, if we look around the neighborhood at the Green Belt Brewery and the bank and things and the library, getting some of the materials from that. We've also, we'd be more than willing to enhance this entry on the corner of Broadway and Marshall if you desire it as well. When we, we had a little bit stronger entry statement when we had the building going in the other direction, but when Public Works put the kibosh on the Broadway entry, we've had to redesign it a little bit more. We also are more than willing to basically flip-flop the two sides. The glass that we had here would go onto the Broadway side, and we would then meet the 30% requirement. If we look at the way we had, I don't know if your camera would go. Basically, where we have windows and metal panel, we would make that all windows. And then, we'd probably be, you know, well over the 30% requirement. It takes, it takes a little bit different retailing setup, but Jason's indicated he's willing to do that. Generally, you would have the beer towards the back of the store. Here, we'll have our craft beer and selections towards the front of the store. And we've tried to have, you know, some different forms of landscaping on all sides of the site. We'd like to do a little bit more on Broadway, we would. One of the things that staff wanted the first time we went through was to basically narrow the sidewalk on 11th and add some landscape because we have these really wide sidewalks in all directions. So, we were more than willing to do that the first time, and now it's actually helping us meet the overall landscape requirements. Is there any other questions about that?
Other questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Kranzer?
Thank you. The plan identifies four bike parking racks. Have you identified any areas where you could add parking, bike parking?
No, but we were considering doing some in the right-of-way as well, which we're told is just a simple encroachment permit. Because we want to, we want to make, we see that there's a lot of potential bike traffic coming from the parkway and along here. So, that'll be a big source of customers.
Okay. Any other questions? I don't see any. Thank you very much. Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? I'm just curious, how many people want to talk? Are you all going to say the same thing, or do you have distinct things to say? If not, I'll limit you to two minutes each. Or you can organize yourselves and do a longer speeches. Well, come on up, first person, and give your name and address, please, for the record. We like to hear all the information, but we like to hear it just once, please. And please, talk about the applications, not some other issues that this may suggest to you.
Hi, my name is Beth Greffen. I am a resident of St. Anthony West. Our neighborhood organization held three public hearings, and on February 13th, the Board of Directors voted against the liquor store proposal. A letter regarding this was sent to you. Thank you very much.
Well done. A model speech, and we got your letter, thank you. I think we got 17 letters, a lot of good stuff in there. So, we already have a fair idea of pros and cons from people other than the applicant. Your name and address for the record, please.
It's Dan Brady, and I'm at 620 Fourth Street Northeast, which is in the Stono neighborhood. My issue is basically the livability issue. Now, that may not have been touched upon, but I'm basing this on history. I grew up in Milwaukee, right above the Lake Michigan bluff. And one of the things we did as youngsters that we would do is collect cans and other sort of items, just for, because we thought the illustrations were cool. It didn't dawn on me how accessible alcohol and beverages were until I started working at a bar in Milwaukee at age 18. It's where they had off-sale liquor. It was hooligans on North Avenue. And that place sold a lot of liquor that headed right to the beach, right to the lakefront. And there, the debris and the litter was pretty intense, especially on holidays. You can walk in there or walk down there and pick up anything you like because people failed to do their civic responsibility of putting it away. It seems to me that this liquor store, being so close to an asset that this state and city is going to have in redeveloping their riverfront, makes me wonder how well our riverfront's going to look when we have accessibility to easy alcohol and people buying it and then taking it down to the park, Sheridan or Shear Brothers, BF Nelson and Boom Island. It seems to me that because you have a liquor store so close, people pick it up, take it down there, party their butts off, and leave it there. So, I'm not sure if you guys deal with that matter or not, but it's something to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else? Come on up, give your name and address for the record, please.
Any one of these?
Sure. The podium is best, probably.
My name is Bob Margul, and I live at 610 Fourth Street Northeast, St. Anthony West neighborhood. And I just want to give you a little bona fide while I'm up here. Basically, I'm the owner of Falk Paper Company. It's 300,000 square feet of warehouse space in the North Loop. I've been with the company for 34 years, and the company's been in the North Loop since 1888. As far as additional bona fide, I am block captain, I'm on the St. Anthony West Neighborhood Group. I've been living in the neighborhood since 1999. And the home that we live in has been owned by my wife's family since 1926. So, essentially, I feel I have something to, something to give and something to defend. I'd like to make, I'd like to make, I guess, two points, I guess, one statement and produce a document. And initially, the, after our nine-to-one vote in opposition to this development, I had an opportunity on the 3rd of March to talk with our councilperson, Jake Frye. Met him in the hallway and talked to him about his position on it. And he was very candid in terms of stating that there were, he had some issues, but that he was solidly behind the neighborhood and its nine-to-one vote and supported the neighborhood's decision. So, that's, that's number one point. I think it's also well to note that it's important, I think, as far as you people are concerned, that we take a look at our leadership and, you know, our political folks that, you know, they kind of are involved in our neighborhoods, and take a look at how you're going to interact with Jacob and his position on this. I think it also holds the same thing with the city council. I think that Jacob's weight within the city council will hold a lot of sway. So, we're looking forward to, you know, to his support and continued support. That's number one. Number two, I brought with me a copy of the Northeastern, I think with a front-page article, and some editorial support. And I'd like to bring those copies up to the clerk and have, and have those passed out to you folks. You get a chance to read it. I think it succinctly, clearly identifies the problem and the issues. And I did want to make a comment. St. Anthony West Neighborhood Group, I guess, takes a look at our neighborhood on a regular basis and takes a look at where we can approve. Right now, we're working on a small area business plan. Part of that, our focus on small area business plans is to take a look at near-term and far-term, long-term development. And I think this is one of these areas that I wish that we would have been about maybe a month or two ahead of the game when we started because this came out of the blue. It was something that we were working on, probably on a kind of a short-term, what would I say, just kind of a small-scale basis. We were looking at replanting, putting a gateway sign, and putting some kind of tarp line down the dumbo sides of the cyclone fence. Granted, it was, you know, it was minor league in terms of trying to do something with this corner, but we felt it was an eyesore. But again, the way this showed up on short-term notice, I think it was important that we had an opportunity to know that it was for sale, it was in development, and we have some dollars that are available. We would have worked hard to get something in here other than a liquor store. Again, Bob Margul, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak? Come on up, give your name and address. Please speak to the issues in front of us. Mr. Frye wants to speak for himself, he may do so when it comes to council, if it does.
Good afternoon, members of the committee. I'm Charlie McGuire. I reside at 715 Main Street Northeast. I've been a resident in northeast Minneapolis since 1976. I'm a member of the Hennepin County Library, Friends at a Library at Pierre Botino, which, as you may note, is kind of kitty-corner across from the proposed site. I've been a member, before the library was actually there, I was one of the northeast Minneapolis citizens that lobbied the library board for Pierre Botino, even going so far as creating a song, which our citizen group sang to the library board that helped establish the new library at the corner of Marshall Street and Broadway Northeast. It's everything any child or parent could want. There are even programs which I have not only participated in but have sponsored as a friend at a library. And these programs can even be outside of the building, in the courtyard, or beside the fountain and benches for reading or simply enjoying the outdoors, just a stone's throw from the Mississippi River. For the children, for the patrons of the Pierre Botino Library, young and old, I would urge you to dismiss this liquor store project. It's ironic that the site of the Pierre Botino Library is on the former site of the Grain Belt Brewery Beer Garden, which sat right at the corner of Marshall and Broadway for many, many years. And the, this area now has been redeveloped to offer books, not beer. Thus, it is truly a resource for people of all ages, especially children. And I would ask that we continue this development of choice northeast assets away from beer, which can be had in huge quantities elsewhere, and not start offering beer and spirits for sale right across the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Come on up, give your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Lynn DeKowzki, and I live at 715 Main Street. I grew up in Minneapolis and lived in Chicago and San Francisco, where I was exposed to a lot of great urban planning and urban living. This is my third home that I've owned within just two blocks of the Mississippi River, and I'm really proud to be a part of living by the river. I just started my second term as a board member of Stono, but I'm speaking to you today on my behalf instead of as, on the organization as a whole. I voted against supporting the liquor store for several reasons. One is I believe that the intersection there is a gateway site and it deserves a higher use. Marshall's expected to become a boulevard, and I think that we should put a better project there. I believe that a liquor store is counterproductive to what the city has planned for the riverfront land, that, as other people have mentioned, Shear Brothers and the various parks that are being developed. And I think that this is inconsistent with the Above the Falls master plan that I've looked through. The Broadway riverfront node, which you all should be looking up this plan yourselves since the planner didn't have it with you, but it says, one, to encourage development of this area with high-density mixed-use development, and two, to support the development of river-oriented commercial and retail uses, the build on the advantages of the riverfront location. And I don't believe the liquor store does that. And the Above the Falls master plan is really what's been approved by the comprehensive municipal plan with the city. In addition to living in the neighborhood, I also work in the Grain Belt Bottling House, which is right behind the big tower. I walk and bike to work during the week, and the Broadway-Marshall intersection is busy and dangerous at all times of the day. One of my coworkers actually totaled her car there last summer. More traffic is just going to cause more havoc at that intersection. And I live on Main Street, and I'm really worried about all the cars leaving and not being able to turn left on Marshall, and they're going to all come down on Main Street. I also write a column called "The Weekend Tourist" for the Downtown Journal and the Southwest Journal. It's about art and architecture and aesthetics of place. I think driving over the Hennepin Avenue Bridge into southeast Minneapolis is a wonderful experience. There are historic buildings on both sides. Brad Jerka's Neon River Boat, you know, is overhead. And I think that we have a chance to do something really exciting at this intersection. It's coming over the river, and let's do something better than a liquor store. This is a crucial city of Minneapolis, a gateway piece of property, and let's work to find a better use for this site. Alcohol is not the answer.
Thank you. Any questions? I don't see any. Someone else wishing to speak? Come on up, give your name and address for the record.
My name is Sheila Biernet, and my address is 701 Main Street. I've lived there for 26 years in the St. Anthony West neighborhood, and I just love our neighborhood. The northeast community currently has 75 businesses through which liquor is distributed, purchased, or consumed, including the controversial pedal pubs which go through our neighborhood streets, 16 people per traveling tavern, making noise, being boisterous, and littering. Do we really need 76? How far is this new site going to be from these existing businesses? At least 84% of these businesses are located within three minutes of the proposed liquor store. The other 6% are less than six minutes. There are six other liquor stores within three minutes of this proposed liquor site. I do have that whole list, and I'll share that with the clerk. And I know people say, "Don't get personal," but what is the livability of a city if you aren't engaged personally? It's my neighborhood, and alcohol has been detrimental to my life. My father and grandfather were alcoholics, and the verbal abuse was torture. My sister-in-law drank herself to death at age 46. Alcohol is so accepted and revered. Let's just not say no to this proposal. Let's say hell no. And I also have one other letter from a friend who works at the bank with me right across the street. And Grace is 83, and she wanted me to give this to you. She's wondering why we can't have a lovely stone sculpture and a waterfall in this corner welcoming folks to northeast. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? I don't see any. Someone else wishing to speak?
Mr. President, Commissioners, I'm Tony Hofstad, a resident at 610 Ramsey Street Northeast. I also mention, only because it may have some importance, is that I am also on the board and one of the members who voted against the development, and also I'm a committee member of Above the Falls, and I'm also a member of the Capitol Long Range Improvement Committee. I mention that because one of the things that is remiss, I think, in the staff report is the traffic report. I understand that they said there's little traffic impact. That's because the city was the only, the public service, the city department was the only department that was so included in the study. You'll note that Marshall Street and Broadway Street are both county highways, and you'll also note, and I, because I sit on the plan for Above the Falls, and I'd be happy to share this with you, I don't think it'll show up there, but this is Marshall Street, which is right here, and I will pass that out, which is a boulevard. And that is also, as you know, part of the comprehensive plan, and it's also a county highway. And yet, no one asked the county, "What's the impact of this development on this particular site?" So I just ask that, again, that be considered. I did want to make one other point, if I may, that if you look at where the site is, and again, it's just quick to notice that there is a double-yellow line that, I'm not sure if you'll see this properly, but there's a double-yellow line that crosses Marshall and into 11th Avenue. I also, the reason I show you this map is an important part of the comprehensive plan at Above the Falls that was approved by the city council, I might add, is the bike plan. And we have been working on the bike plan for, I'm trying to think how long, for Marshall Street, and the bike plan ends at 10th Avenue, because we've been trying to figure out a way in order to extend that plan. As a member of the Capitol Long Range Improvement Committee, unfortunately, what happens is the county never shares with the city those projects which they are working on. So we have no idea what the plan is for that street. There was, if you're talking about a boulevard, there's been talk about expanding the size of the street, and we don't know, and that, obviously, since this building is directly built to the street, it creates a problem if that is to expand. So, again, I thank you for your time, and if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
I just have a quick question. So does the bike plan or the Above the Falls plan suggest right-of-way acquisition on Marshall?
It doesn't, you mean, there is, I'm not sure what your question is.
Well, does it suggest right-of-way acquisition to widen the right-of-way?
Well, there is, there is, yes, they are speaking of that, or we have, we have spoke to the commissioner, the previous commissioner, about this, about widening the street, because there's also other issues that end up further down Marshall Street. If you look at Psycho Suzie's and how we can, how we can plan that in addition, but it stops at 10th Avenue, which is a block and a half.
Yes, anytime you have to acquire right-of-way, it makes a simple implementation much more difficult. So the real, the reality of acquiring right-of-way is, becomes much more difficult. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, I don't see any. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Others wishing to speak? Come on up, please. One of you, please. Don't be too polite here.
I guess I am too polite. My name is Eda Brusitis, and I'm speaking for Lisa Hondros, who unfortunately couldn't be here. You have her written comments, and this is on behalf of Friends of the Riverfront, which is a nonprofit that's interested in the development of the riverfront in an appropriate way. We're here on the sole issue of the very important parkway. We think that our concern is, is that it hasn't been considered. The parkway is definitely part of the Above the Falls plan. So Marshall Street as the parkway for northeast is a vital part of the Above the Falls plan. And we're concerned, as people who believe in non-motorized transportation, that this particular development is going to make things difficult, especially when you consider turning on, from Marshall Street, have cars turning, cars turning into now the entrance off of Marshall Street and 11th Street, and it's going to make it very difficult. To your point, Commissioner Kronzer, I have heard that there may be plans to acquire right-of-way. There is another liquor store that's at Lowry and Marshall Street. It's called River Liquor, and that owner has told me that he, he believes that he will have to move his business back from the street in order to accommodate the kind of traffic, the improvements that they're going to need. So what I'm concerned about this is, I don't see how you can approve the site plan or the CUP without having this very important information in front of you. I've thought, because this could possibly, the way this is put up against the street may prevent a very important amenity for the city, and I urge you to deny this, not approve the CUP or the site plan. Undoubtedly, this project will be appealed, and if the applicant can prove that it doesn't affect the future parkway, so be it. Otherwise, they have the opportunity to develop the site plan in a different way, perhaps a multi-story building that will allow this other use. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? I don't see any. I know we had one, at least one more person.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. My name is Joe Bjornet, and I'm a member of the St. Anthony West Neighborhood, and I have been for about 30 years, and I live on Main Street. Main Street, if you saw on the map here, is directly in back of this proposed development, but it's connected to the development by 11th Avenue. What you don't see on your map is how narrow 11th Avenue is, and that's going to be important, and I will explain here. Those of you who have traveled this area of Broadway and Marshall, you know how congested it really is up there. As we speak, and this goes to Commissioner Kronzer's earlier question, as we speak, there is a jurisdiction studying this area, and it's Hennepin County. They are currently holding public hearings in our community about the problematic traffic at Marshall and Lowry, both county roads, and so I suspect in short order they will come up the street and hold meetings in our neighborhood on Marshall and Broadway as well. I think a stark omission from your staff report before you is that city staff has not solicited any input from the county, even though these are county roads. And the county in the Above the Falls plan refers to Marshall as, in their vision, a park-like street, a park-like, it doesn't talk about the acquisition necessarily, but they want it to be a park-like street. Members of the commission, current municipal ordinances state that all maneuvers associated with loading, parking, or sanitary pickup for a private development shall occur on private property. Respectfully, I call your attention to the proposed parking lot, which is the same parking lot, not only for the customers but also for the 18-wheelers semi-trucks who are going to come in there. There is no loading zone. They come into the parking lot and unload in the middle of the parking lot. I would submit to you that that is a very difficult maneuver for any truck driver to make. Now, when the egress, they're scheduled to go off of 11th Avenue, according to the city staff report before you. Well, again, looking at the map, you can't see how narrow 11th Avenue is. 11th Avenue permits parking on both sides of the street, and with the other commerce in the area with the pizza establishment and the 1029 restaurant, it's going to create a major problem. There is no way a semi-truck driver can navigate that turn. The truck driver, however, could do something different. They could turn left and go up to Main Street and come through the residential neighborhood. Main Street, as you know, is a quiet residential street bifurcated by a median down the middle of the street for three or four blocks. At our neighborhood meeting, the developer told us that he is going to ask the beer distributors to deliver his goods in small trucks. We know this is not reality. At the same meeting, and this is in your report before you, the developer said he is going to require deliveries to come only during off-peak, only during off-peak hours. Again, we know this is not reality. If you look at the Marshall Street entrance, as we just pointed out, you would think that cars coming south on Marshall could simply take a left and go into that driveway cut. This is not true. Marshall Street is divided by a double-yellow line. State law prohibits crossing over a double-yellow line, as does local municipal code. Legally, this means that southern traveling cars have to go up to the next intersection, take a left, and go up 11th Street, and then try to come into this parking lot using the egress that is dedicated to the truck drivers. Members of the planning commission, I urge you to seek more input on this, especially from the county public works. Logistically, this proposed development simply does not work on a lot this size. Commissioner Kronzer, I asked, I was really grateful to hear your question about the Above the Falls plan. I think it's an extremely important one. The Above the Falls plan is a bold visionary plan, calling for bike trails, calling for green space, calling for recreational space. It does not call for a liquor store. In all the material before you, I ask you to please play, pay close attention to Commissioner Liz Walensky's letter talking about the plan and how the park board is frightfully concerned about this proposal. It's not congruent with that plan. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any questions? I don't see any. How many more people wish to speak? Okay, new information, please. Please be brief. Come on up, give your name.
Good afternoon. I'm Bill Witrock. I'm a senior associate at RSP Architects, and I'm representing RSP Architects at 1220 Marshall Street. This particular piece of property is extraordinarily visible. The word gateway has been used, and it's appropriate for this particular piece. For 30 years, the city has had an active hand on how to transform this neighborhood. 30 years ago, it was an active brewery, and it went dark for 25 years, and RSP Architects moved into the building, and the city was very involved in having it and making that happen. Small area plan for the Sheraton neighborhood, where our office is and adjacent to the St. Anthony neighborhood, was very active in defining that the current policies, the current guiding should be close to connections to the river, bringing arts and making sure that there are, that's public realm. This is evidenced by the four corners, at least three corners, of Broadway and Marshall. The library's an open space, the bank has an open corner, and the Graco Building has a open corner. This piece of property is the missing link. The rest of the policies of the city, including planning commission, including council, over the last 30 years, are coming to fruition with vacant properties around the brew house being built with high-density housing, which is called for in all the policies and guiding, and it looks like it's going to be a great success, but for this piece of property. In the findings for conditional use, there is one measure that says the conditional use should be consistent with the applicable policies in the comprehensive plan, and I would submit that for 30 years, the comprehensive plan does not call for, or does not require or want the use that is being proposed at this corner. The architects have done a fantastic job bringing a piece of building to this corner. Staff has appropriately applied the design guidelines, but that's not the issue. I believe the issue before you to consider is this use consistent with 30 years of history and a proven implementation of that policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? None? Okay.
Hello, my name is Patrick Griffin. I'm a resident of St. Anthony West. And, like to address the site plan, what we see here on the screen and what we've seen in the illustrations is a very nice building, but it's a hype. First of all, there has been no discussion or presentation of exterior lighting. We don't have any idea of what the signage would be, and as far as the landscaping is concerned, I doubt very much if the city would allow trees on the boulevard. So, in looking at their existing liquor store, I'd just like to show you a few photos. That's on Baraha and Lake Street. What I'm saying is, don't believe the hype. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else?
Good evening, Chair Tucker and Commissioners. I'm Diane Hofstad, resident of St. Anthony West Neighborhood and long-term resident of the northeast area, and former Third Ward Councilmember of this area, 610 Ramsey Street. The St. Anthony West Board voted to deny the conditional use for the Krauss Liquor Store on Broadway and Marshall Street, and I ask you to deny the conditional use permit for the liquor store. And I'm going to cite findings which I believe you can use to make your determination for denial, and I will be using the Minneapolis Comp Plan. If you review the Minneapolis Comp Plan, Section 1010.6, it requires that the storefront windows transparency to both ensure natural surveillance and inviting pedestrian experience. Windows that are over eight feet high do not do either in accommodating the pedestrian experience. On Map 7.3, Regional Parks and Trails, Marshall Street at this location is designated as a future parkway, and the lack of windows along Marshall does not make, again, for an inviting experience, but it is also a well-traveled bike corridor with a vision of expanding bike amenities on Marshall Street. 10.11.2 in the section, ensure that new commercial development maximizes compatibility with surrounding neighborhoods. This intersection is the entrance to the northeast arts district, and a liquor store would not create the impression desired for a community or maximize compatibility with the surrounding neighborhoods. In the land use section of the Minneapolis Comp Plan, Broadway Avenue Northeast from Mississippi River, I-35W, is defined as a community corridor. The site is currently a commercially zoned property. It is designed for mixed use on Map 1.2 of the future land use in the Comp Plan. Mixed use allows for mixed use development, and that includes residential. Mixed use may also include a mix of retail, office, or residential within a building or within the district. Under the last use, land use section, 1.5.2 states facilitates the redevelopment of underutilized commercial areas by evaluating possible land use changes against pot, potential impacts on the surrounding neighborhood. I think you have a case in point here. 1.9.5 states encourages the development of low-to-medium-density housing on community corridors to serve as a transition to surrounding low-density residential areas. 1.9.6 of the, under the land use section, states promote more intensive residential development along community quarters, near intersections with neighborhood commercial nodes, and other locations where it is compatible with the existing character. By denying this one-story, single-use development, the planning commission would be promoting the desired first, future uses of the site for more intensive density with mixed use. A city goal is to add more density to our city, and a denial would give an opportunity to consider more density and more mixed uses, and allow for the St. Anthony West Small Area Plan to continue. Section 10.18.1 requires that parking lots meet or exceed the landscaping and screening requirements of the zoning code, especially along transit corridors adjacent to residential areas and areas of transition between land uses. Staff is requiring, is requesting alternative compliances which do, which are on a major gateway entrance to our communities. Policy 10.20, promote an attractive environment by minimizing visual clutter and confusion caused by a proliferation of signage. No signage plan has been submitted for your approval and public discussion. Instead, staff is recommending that all signage, landscaping, and lighting be approved by staff. Our community and the planning commission will not have input in the final decisions of the gateway into our neighborhoods. In Chapter 2.23.200 of the zoning code for the C2 commercial, which... In Chapter 2.23.200 of the zoning code for the C2 commercial, which this sign, this area, the sign, the signage in this area could have a maximum height of 28 feet, or could be a dynamic-changing copy sign. Arguments can be made that a sign of 28 feet or a dynamic-change sign could be visual clutter, depending on what is submitted near our riverfront, our community library, international headquarters, and nationally historic buildings. The development is a wrong idea in the wrong place. Marshall Street is slated to become a parkway that we have waited for, in my case, a lifetime. Millions of dollars are being invested to create a more vibrant front door along this river corridor, including the new Sheraton Memorial Park, just northwest of this site, and the entrance to the Northeast Arts District. This is not a project that is river-related or gateway. We embrace our distillery and our brewing past and present in Northeast, and we celebrate our history, as we did with Grain Belt Brewery, now the home of the international architectural firm and the American Craft Council, who moved to Northeast Minneapolis to the historic Grain Belt Brewery from New York City. I urge you to deny the conditional use permit and give St. Anthony West neighborhood the opportunity to complete our small area plan, which is now underway. I urge you to deny this application. Thank you. I also will say a couple of things, and that is, I have a letter from a local dental clinic who grew up in the area, and I will submit that to the city clerk, and also would just like to correct a statement made by the proposed owner. The proposed liquor store development on Broadway and, thank you, and Washington, was not approved. That was denied. That was denied in North Minneapolis, and I think we have some residents here that could attest to that, but I voted for that on the city, against that on the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? None? How many more? We've got quite a few issues already covered: signage, gateway, traffic, parkway, window. So I would like new information and brief, if we can. We've gone for more than an hour on the public hearing.
Okay. I'll try to be brief. I drive by that corner almost every day, and when I heard that there was going to be new development, I was actually excited, and I went, huh, what's going to happen there? And then I heard it was a liquor store, and I went, oh. And then I saw the designs, and I thought the designs were very nicely designed, and I went, oh, that's not so bad. But then it kept sticking with me. I just don't like the idea of a liquor store there, and I started thinking, huh, this building looks so different than any liquor store that I've seen, and how could that be? And then I realized there are no signs on that building, and there are no papers pasted in the window, and so I took that building and I put down signs that I thought it might look like, and then I went, you know, I think that that's a really bad idea, and I'm going to come down here and say that, because it is a gateway, and the building is beautiful, but once those signs get up, it's going to change the whole thing. So that's one point that I want to make. And then at night, it's going to be well-lit, I'm sure, and it will just broadcast liquor, which I don't like that idea. So I had another issue, and people have talked about this a little bit, but I did a drawing for what I see when I drive on that road. I'm going northbound, so I would be the car in red, although I don't try to make the light, but I see cars trying to make that light, and then I see cars trying to make the light when they're going south. I would be going north on the red arrow. Cars come south trying to make the light, and I thought, okay, people are always in a hurry. Those people are going to want to get in and out of the liquor store, and they're going to turn into this driveway right here, and these people that are making the light, because the light's just right here, they're going to, I think you're going to have problems. And then on top of it, you've got parking along here and the door, and so this person who did get into the parking lot is going to be walking across this entranceway where this car is quickly turning in to get to the entrance, and I think you have a problem. I just, you know, I've heard these people are very upstanding citizens. I have no problem with you. I have no problem with liquor stores, but this is it.
Please talk to us.
Okay. So I think we can aim higher. I think a liquor store doesn't belong across the street from a library. I just don't see those working together. And then one other point, I don't come down here very often. I came down here a year and a half ago, when the city staff approved a Tires for Less building on Marshall Street, and we in the neighborhood came out like this and said, we don't think that's a good idea, and thank goodness we convinced you, or you saw your own wisdom. We waited a few short months, and I know just now that business, the food hub that is at 1401, has been transformed. It's not even finished yet. I just think if we wait a little bit longer, all of this money that we've spent on this gateway area for the Upper River will, will come to fruition, and we, we can, we can expect a better development, more appropriate for this site. I just think we need a little patience, and we need to aim a little higher.
Thank you. Could you give us your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Karen Burnthall. I have a building at 1509 Marshall Street that I bought 10 years ago and have been slowly trying to transform, and I've been through this process.
Okay. One more here.
Hello. My name is Kay Christensen, and I'm with Stephen Scott Management, and we are representing the developer and the management company of the new apartment community, The Grain Belt Apartments. And I'd also like to say that I'm hopefully representing 200-plus renters that'll be occupying this luxury community that we're a part of. We are really excited about the liquor store, and one of the reasons why is because we look at it as an amenity to our property, and I know there was some talk about the look of the liquor store, and I can tell you that the millennial generation that we're marketing to isn't going to go to a liquor store that doesn't look cool from the outside. So I just, I just wanted to share that we're excited about it, and we feel that this will be a great service and an amenity for, for the residents of our community.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, I am going to close the public hearing. I think we've had all the issues explored two or three times over, some in more amusing ways than others. So Commissioners, we have just two applications before us. We have a motion. Commissioner Brown?
Mr. President, I will move staff recommendation to approve both Item 2A, the conditional use permit, and Item 2B, the site plan review with the stated conditions. I'd also like to add a seventh condition to Item 2B, and that is that the applicant work with staff to enhance the north entrance of the building through building architecture and landscaping.
That's the Broadway entrance?
That is the Broadway entrance, yes.
You almost had my exact words there. Okay. Do I have a second on that?
Okay.
Okay. It's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Do we want to talk about this a little bit? There's obviously a lot of different ideas on how this land should be used.
Add an eighth condition?
Sure.
Add the add an eighth condition, that the applicant shall provide and maintain a minimal 15 bicycle parking stalls on-site?
Just to clarify, with using the language "on-site," can that be in the adjacent public right-of-way?
On-site or adjacent to.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. That's a suggested eighth condition for the site plan review. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that amendment? None? All in favor of adding condition number eight? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Let's return to the main motion, which is A and B now with eight conditions. Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, I'd just like to address a lot of the comments we heard, and I certainly respect those comments, and I don't disagree that this is a very prominent and visible location, and I realize that a single-story building at that location seems a little underwhelming, and we'd like to see something a little bit more grand. However, the, really what we have to work with is the zoning code and the business licensing regulations, and this, this location is zoned C2, and in the C2 zoning district, a single-story building is allowed. There's, there's no requirement that it's a mixed-use building or, or anything like that. And, and also the business licensing regulations allow for a liquor store at this location, and I know in the last year or two, some of those standards were relaxed a little bit, so liquor stores can be located in, in more locations throughout the city. So, and I also would like to quickly address the issue of the signage. I know we haven't seen a sign plan, but I'm fairly confident that the sign regulations we have would prohibit, you know, paper signs covering all of the windows and so forth. So I'm comfortable with, with the motion with, with the conditions that we've added.
Okay. Commissioner Bender, then Commissioner Cronser?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was actually going to make a lot of the same points, so I'll just echo those and add, you know, there are regulatory tools to encourage or require more density at sites, FAR minimums, but those are not in place now. So given the, you know, the current zoning and the current regulations that we're operating under, you know, this meets all of those requirements. So, you know, I think it's a conversation to keep having as a community. We have some of the same issues along Hennepin, where we see a lot of one-story commercial buildings being built, but again, you know, that's part of a future, long-range planning discussion, I would say.
Thank you. Commissioner Cronser?
Yes, and not to repeat anything my fellow commissioners just said, it's important that we do need to respond to a specific application in front of us, not what could be or what should be. Also, this is a small site. It's a third of an acre, and just thinking about how a mixed-use project would be parked on the site, it's a very difficult site to redevelop. I could, I could see in the future a developer coming to us with zero parking, and I could just hear the conversation about a project with zero parking. So I'm keeping my focus on what's in front of us here, so I will be supporting. And I just want to make a mention about the future greenway and bike lanes. I think that's very important, and the city has shown great leadership in providing on-street bike facilities and promoting that as a, as a cultural element of the city. But just looking up and down the street, it's very infeasible to widen this right-of-way. If you look up, you look at the Grain Belt Brewery, the Grain Belt Office Building, Dusty's, Kirin's new project, Boone Trucking, the Packing Corp, and going south, Northeast, Yacht Club, and Elsie's, they're all built on the property line. That's tens of millions of dollars of right-of-way to widen the streets. So I think a greenway is a good goal, and I think it can be achieved. Building this building where it's located, proposed, is not going to affect those proposals in this few-block stretch, so it's going to be very similar to all the buildings around the streets. So, thank you, President Tucker.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak on the motion to approve? Okay. Before we take a vote, I just want to thank everyone who came out. Testimony was very good, some of it very brief. I always like that. The testimony that refers back to the comprehensive plan and its goals is very helpful in, in putting together findings. I think that's your most effective testimony, so thank you for, for bringing that all forward. With that, Clerk will call a roll on the motion to approve Application A, the CUP, and B, the site plan review. The site plan review with now eight conditions.
Bender?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Gusselman?
Aye.
Cronser?
Four zero.
Thank you very much. That concludes item number two. We now move to item number four, please. And this is Metro Taxi and Limo at 3520 43rd Street East.
It was my testimony.
Shanna, you stayed.
I did.
How nice.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
And who was it that wanted to talk about this? Did you have a particular issue, or?
Kind of, yeah. Kind of concerns about parking and.
Okay. If you would talk about the parking in particular.
Absolutely.
Otherwise, you can be fairly brief, I think.
Yes. The property at 3520 43rd Street East is zoned I-1, light industrial, and it is also zoned with the industrial living overlay district. The proposed use is a taxi service that will only be doing fleet maintenance and office function only. The dispatch, storage of vehicles would be done off-site. The drivers own their own vehicles, and they're located not at the property. So the applicant has gone to great lengths to ensure that those visiting the site, the drivers, are scheduled at such times where there's not significant overlap. The previous land use required nine parking stalls, where three were provided, so there are non-conforming rights in essence to six. The total required parking is five. Therefore, technically, the applicant is not required to provide any off-street parking. However, they are proposing four off-street parking spaces that would be accessed off of the existing alley. So there would be three at the south end of the site, plus one handicap-accessible stall, and then there is sufficient storage space within the structure if vehicles did need to spend the night, to be parked within the structure, and that, that would allow for another six stalls. So essentially, there's room for 10 cars to be parked at the property. And again, then there are non-conforming rights, so therefore, the parking requirement is actually zero.
Okay.
Maybe that addresses a little bit of the concern.
Okay. Let's see if there are any questions from the commission first.
Sure.
I don't see any. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll open the public hearing. Come on up and give your name and address, please, and tell us about your issue.
My name's Mark Meyer. I live at 4242-Dite. Never done this before, so forgive my ignorance, but my concern is I just want to know if there are going to be more taxis or more limos parked on the street or in the alley, or if they're just going to be parked on the site itself. I'm concerned about having parking space in front of my house.
Oh, you saw your concern is parking, street parking taken out by this operation?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Any questions on, from Commissioners? Okay. Don't see any. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this? Come on up, give your name and address, please, for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Javat Fegati. I'm the owner and operator of the Metro Taxi and Limo. I've been at this location for about a year and a half, and I've been operating without knowing that I have to have a use permit for the building. So, anyway, I came with site plan and everything, whatever the city required, and I came, first of all, to this country in 1979, and I get, did, through my education, getting my master's degree from Mankato State and going to, for my PhD, for South Dakota Southern University, and I've been working in the educational and industrial fields for many years. Then in about 12 years ago, I bought this taxi company. I've been operating, and I, right now, I am a member of the executive of the MAC Office for the Taxi Advisory Committee, and so I'm aware of the whole business, and in the last year and a half, I haven't seen any concern, but I have to go through the process to get the permission.
Do your cabs park on the street?
No, because all the cabs, they are leased to the drivers, and they are 24/7. They, they have the cab in their own territory, either at the airport or at their home. They come to the site only for the service by the appointment. We are coming, that make them some of the numbers on Thursday, some of them on Friday. That is not going to be even, you know, crowded area over there.
Okay. Let's see if any of the other Commissioners have questions?
Just one question. Commissioner Cronser? Can you explain how, if any, of the current operations will change if this project is approved?
Not at all. Nothing. Everything has been the same as before, and then right now, we are operating more because we get the experience from the neighborhood, and then I'm talking to the neighborhoods and to all my neighbors to see if there is any concern or any issue that is going to bother them, and I will be happy to solve it, and I haven't seen any concern at all. I've been in the neighborhood the last week and a half to see if anybody is concerned about, or they have any questions. Nothing at all.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? If not, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, Item Four is two applications for a conditional use permit. Staff recommends approval with one condition, and on the variance, approval with one condition, and on the site plan review, approval with nine conditions. Do I have a motion?
Yes. I will move approval of Items Four- Yes, I will move approval of Items 4A, the conditional use permit, B, the variance, and C, the site plan review with all of the stated conditions.
Okay, may I have a second? Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Clerk, please call a roll on Item 4.
Bender?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Gusselman?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Four zero.
Okay, thank you. That concludes our business. We adjourn until the next regular Planning Commission meeting, May 5, 2014. We have a Cal meeting tomorrow. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you all. Can I have a ride?